This conference will now be recorded.
Jane, I think it's your microphone on your computer.
Oh. I'll try, well, I'll turn it off and everybody else talk and see if it's my microphone.
What makes you think, Tina, what makes you think it's Jane?
Because when the noise comes up, it pops up Jane is talking.
Oh, I didn't notice that. Okay. Alright, so maybe that's the case. So what are you suggesting? She'd be better off calling in with her cellphone and not going through her computer?
Yeah, mute the computer and turn on the cellphone.
Okay, I'll do that then.
Is Colleen not here?
I talked to her earlier, she should be coming.
Okay.
So Jane, why don't you talk a little bit and let's confirm we've got it all straightened out?
Are you still setting up, Jane?
Yes.
Okay. So I think we might be good then.
So we just go to Colleen, I just texted her.
Hello?
There she is.
Yeah, my computer won't let me in, so I'm gonna do this by phone. Okay, everyone there?
Well, I'll busy.
Okay, we'll start. The public hearing on the CDBG application has been canceled. The hearing will be rescheduled for August voting meeting. Okay, so now we're gonna call to order. By the authority vested in me, I hereby declare this meeting of the Country Hocken Borough Council duly open and ready to conduct any business that may come before it. Brittany, could you do roll call? Thank you.
Present.
Councilmember Griffin? Hey, greedy air.
I'm here.
Here he is.
Councilmember Flanagan?
Present.
Councilmember Barton?
Here.
Councilmember Chokey?
Here.
Vice President Sokolowski?
Here.
President Leonard?
Here.
Mayor Arrington?
Here.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for joining us for our regularly scheduled public work session via video conference under a conference call. At this time, I would ask that all participants except for Borough Council, Mayor, Borough Manager, and Borough Solicitor mute their audio lines. No public comments will be permitted during the course of the meeting until the designated public comment section located on the agenda. You will be notified during the meeting when public comments are permitted. You may also submit your written comments via email to brogers@countryhockenpa.gov. A member of the Borough Administration during public comment period will read public comments submitted in this manner. For all comments, please include your name and address for the record. It is of the utmost importance that the public is given every available opportunity to participate in the meeting. However, if required, we will mute all audio lines due to any inappropriate comments or behavior during the remote meeting. Borough Council and Administration thank you in advance for your cooperation during the remote meeting. We hope that everyone in our community is staying safe and healthy. At this time, I would also like to take a moment to thank Chris Stettler, Ray Sokolowski, and Angela Orr for their work in securing the COVID-19 Supplemental Firefighters Grant. This grant specifically provides funding for the purchase of PPE for the Borough's Fire Department. The total grant awarded was approximately $50,000. The federal share of the grant is approximately $48,000, with the Borough match being approximately $2,000. Chris Stettler will manage the grant moving forward. The Borough will officially accept the grant prior to the August deadline. Please join me in thanking the Administration for their hard work and efforts to secure the supplemental funding that will help our brave frontline firefighters battling COVID-19 on a daily basis. Okay. At this time, I need a motion to approve the Borough's acceptance of the COVID-19 Supplemental Firefighters Grant.
I'll make that motion. Anita?
A second. Mike?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda under Presentations is recognition of service of an EAC member. Mayor Arrington?
Thank you, President Leonard.
You're welcome.
So Matt works for the Red Cross, and as you can imagine, they're very, very busy with yesterday's storm damage. So he may not actually be on this call, but I know he will watch the video and I know he'll appreciate what I have to tell residents about his service to the community. So our EAC Chair and Vacancy Board Member, Matt Breidenstein, announced last month that he was moving out of the borough and will have to resign from both committees. Matt, I think many residents know from your incredible work on the EAC, but I want to highlight some of the major impacts you've made in the borough that a lot of residents may not know about. You were an early champion of our Contract and Running Club, which attracts more than 100 runners on a nice Thursday evening. You helped me personally flesh out and expand the small trail cleanup that the club ran twice yearly into the large community cleanup that attracts our nonprofits, community groups, and dozens of volunteers. You also served as President of the Conch Hocken Plymouth White Marsh Rotary Club, spearheading what is now the annual Conch Hocken Beer Festival. Among your other accomplishments as President, you started a second evening meeting of Rotary that grew our local club into one of the youngest and most female Rotary Clubs in the nation, and remains active, engaged, and in constant support of our community. As Chair of the EAC for the past seven years, you have recruited a strong and energetic team of residents to advocate for the environment in the borough. You led the charge to revive our Shetree Commission, create a rain barrel installation program, and perhaps the most important, to work with Council to pass the Ready for 100 Resolution, committing the borough to sustainable energy by 2035. This is also on top of our EAC Resident Education Programs for Lantern Flies, Recycling and Sora Wondery Management, and many others. And of course, under your leadership, we saw the creation of our now beloved EAC mascot, Sprout. Matt, these programs and initiatives have your fingerprints all over them. And best of all, because of your commitment to continually recruiting committee members and volunteers, we have a strong foundation to build. We will surely miss your energetic, impeccably informed presentation to Council about the EAC's initiatives and your positive, active, and community-based vision. On behalf of Borough Council, our Administration, and our residents, I present you electronically with this plaque in honor of your service to Conch Hocken. I hope we see you back in the borough often. Thank you for all that you have done, and I will make sure to work with Brittany to get the plaque to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Arrington. Congratulations, Matt. Thank you for your service.
Thanks, Matt. You'll be missed.
Okay, the next item under Land Use Matters, Public Hearings, and Ordinance is the SEPTA Station Project Zoning Hearing Board Application. For Council's information, this is information only, and no vote is necessary, and I will turn that over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So tonight's presentation, as I said, has to do with the proposed SEPTA train station. This is the same project that was presented a few meetings ago, as far as the land development for the new SEPTA train station, which generally consists of the new high-level platforms and train station, new parking lot, long storm water management, and also the new road crossing to extend Oak Street to the south side of the tracks. So tonight, SEPTA is gonna be presenting on the zoning application that they will be bringing to the zoning hearing board later this month on the 17th in support of this project. The applicant is seeking eight variances, which can be divided up into two main categories. The primary variances they are seeking is with regard to the flood conservation district. The SEPTA train station property lies in the SP1, SP3, and floodplain conservation district. Now, the train station is a permitted use in the SP1 and 3 districts. However, construction generally is not permitted in the flood conservation district unless there is a strict application of the zoning code cannot be met. In this case, we have the SEPTA tracks are located fully within the flood conservation district. Therefore, any station supporting the borough is going to be located in this district. The zoning code, which is adopted, the current floodplain zoning code was adopted a few years ago, lays out stipulations and requirements for when granting a variance. Primarily, the applicant must demonstrate that the base flood elevation is not impacted any more than by one foot in rise in the base flood elevation, and that has to be presented with engineer report. The applicant did provide that report, and it has been reviewed, and everything is within the technical limits that is permitted. The code, if the variance is granted by the zoning hearing board, the code lays out technical provisions that would be applicable to this development, including the need to get all local, state, and federal approvals that are required. And the other group of variances that they're seeking have to do with landscaping and buffering around parking lots, the height of lights over the parking lot, and the dimension of parking spaces. With that, I would turn it over to, I believe, Michael Gill, who will be presenting for SEPTA.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Eric. Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Gill. Appeared before you, or I should say, spoke with you, all, as Eric said, a couple months ago, when the Borough Council granted the waiver for land development and the substantive waivers that you granted on June 17th. The property, as Eric mentioned, is located entirely within your floodplain conservation district, and therefore, the first variances that we're seeking are with regard to the ability to do any construction within the floodplain conservation district. The engineering report to which Eric made reference, and which will be an exhibit at the hearing, demonstrates that with the SEPTA's construction of the new station, the two new apartment projects, and the future SEPTA parking garage, the water surface elevation will be increased by less than one foot. So that seems to be a pretty straightforward issue, and it's very much existential to the project. Without that variance, obviously, the project can't proceed. There are other variances that SEPTA is seeking, and I'll just run through those real quickly. But before I go any further, I'll just point out that joining me on the call tonight, we have Alicia Nardo, who is the Project Manager for SEPTA, and we have Steve Gallin, who is the Civil Engineer at SEPTA. So to the extent that there are any technical or engineering questions about the project or the variances, Alicia and Steve are here as well. As I mentioned, the floodplain variance is first and foremost, as I stated, existential. We seem to have an extra there. As I, as I, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
I am going to ask, anyone who is not speaking at the moment, turn off your audio. There's an awful lot of backfeed. Okay.
All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Oh, there we go. That's much better. Thank you.
Yes.
So in addition to the floodplain variance, we have landscaping variances, a lighting variance, a parking stall size variance, and an access variance. And I'm gonna take those out of order because I think that the parking stall issue can be easily disposed of. It's identical to a waiver that you granted when you granted land development approval. Both your SADO and your zoning ordinance have independent requirements that parking stalls be nine feet in width, and SEPTA is going to be installing parking stalls that are eight and a half feet in width. So for the same reasons that the Borough Council granted the waiver, those will serve as the basis, that will serve as the basis for our request for the variance to the zoning hearing board. We do have an access variance to Washington Street. Washington Street's going to be extended and realigned, and we have a drop-off area, which is, if we can just jump to the other sheet on the plan set. So we've got, the site plan itself consists of two sheets with a match line. If we can jump to the other one. There we go. Thank you very much. So you see the drop-off area with the five handicap spaces just to the south of the new station building, or southeast, I should say, of the new station building. That drop-off loop has an ingress into the drop-off loop area from Washington Street, and it has an egress out to Washington Street. Given the nature of the property, the location of the existing track line, and as I said, the shape of the property, there is no way to design that drop-off loop without having an ingress from Washington Street and egress to Washington Street. So we have two points of access to a street, and your ordinance only allows one point of access to any given street, so we need a variance in that regard as well. I'm gonna jump back to lighting now, and if you take a look at the parking area that is on the southeast side of Oak Street as extended, those nine parking spaces that you see there, those will have lighting poles at a height of 23 feet. The rest of the lighting poles at the station will be ordinance compliant. They'll be 15 feet. In order to provide for uniformity of lighting at the parking area, however, we need to go to 23 feet with those lighting poles. Obviously, you have people coming to and leaving the station both before dawn and after nightfall, and it's very important to provide for uniform lighting throughout the parking area. So in order to accomplish that, we are gonna be using 23-foot-tall lighting poles instead of 15. But as I said, everywhere else on the station, the lighting poles will be 15 feet in height. And then that brings us to the landscaping variances, and here we have the most, in terms of number of variances. And specifically, I'm referring to Section 1609 of your zoning ordinance, Section 1609, 1B, 1C, and 1D. I'll just generally talk about this. Your ordinance is quantity-based, as I'm sure you're aware. So you look at the number of linear feet of parking areas, you look at the number of parking spaces that are being provided in any given development, and the ordinance has formulae that are used then to determine the number of trees and the number of shrubs that would be required. The ordinance also talks about the width of buffer areas, and we're seeking variance relief from both the quantity of landscaping and the width of landscaping and buffering areas. So specifically, Brittany, if we could go to the landscaping plan, which is sheet C800?
Just give me one minute. My computer is going a little slow, buffering.
Well, I'll just talk about the quantity issues, and then we can double back to the width issues there when we have the plan. SEPTA is providing 30 trees along the frontage of Washington Street and around the parking area that's on the southeast corner, the southeast side, excuse me, of Oak Street as extended. The ordinance would require 46 trees in total, and SEPTA is gonna provide 30 of those trees. The ordinance would also require 135 shrubs based on the calculations, the formulae that I just mentioned, and SEPTA is providing 45 shrubs, and those are going to be in the bio-retention basin areas on the property. Excuse me. As I mentioned, I think during, I know I mentioned it during either the Planning Commission or the Borough Council meetings leading up to the land development approval, SEPTA's maintenance program is such that these are passively managed sites. There are people there at certain times of the day, either patrons or otherwise, but this is not, these are not sites where there are people, SEPTA employees there all day, every day. So as a matter of course, at regional rail stations, SEPTA prefers to just go with grass cover. It's easy to maintain, SEPTA's, the people that SEPTA uses for landscape maintenance can go out there and mow the lawn and then move on to another station. So for those reasons, as well as some site design issues, we would like to have the variance to move forward with the, just the 30 trees along Washington Street and the shrubbery within the bio-retention areas, as opposed to the trees and shrubs. We have placed those trees and shrubs, we think, in areas on the property that make sense. Obviously, we want to keep trees outside of the track area so that there's no potential for interference between the catenary poles and the landscaping. So we've put the landscaping on the south side of the project site, again, as I mentioned, along Washington Street and around the parking areas. With regard to the width of the landscaping, now coming back to that parking area, taking a look at the landscaping plan on the screen, the width of the landscape buffer area around the parking, there's nine parking spaces to the southeast of Oak Street. There is a pinch point right up at the top of that parking area where the width of that buffer area shrinks down to three feet. Otherwise, for the most part, the width of the area does comply with the ordinance that recalls for a 10-foot-wide buffer area around the perimeter of the parking. And then your ordinance also would require a landscape buffer between parking spaces and an internal drive aisle. And coming over to the five handicap spaces that are just south of the station building, you can see that there is no landscape buffer between those spaces and the drive aisle loop. And treating that drive aisle loop as an internal drive aisle, treating that drop-off loop, excuse me, as an internal drive aisle, would trigger that ordinance requirement, and obviously, there's no room there to put in a landscape area. So those are the, that's the scope of the variances that SEPTA is going to be seeking from the zoning hearing board. And we're happy to take any questions that members of Borough Council or anybody else might have. But I'm pretty sure that this is consistent with the plans, well, I'm not pretty sure. I am very sure that this is consistent with the plans that were submitted to you for land development. We do need the variances in order to proceed, and once we have those in hand, we'll be ready to move forward with the project. So I'm gonna stop talking and see if anybody has any questions.
I have two. Your drop-off area is one-way?
Yes.
Okay, and regarding your lighting, will they be shielded from the apartments that are there?
Yes, they are directionally shielded so that the light is shining direct down, and I'm just gonna ask Alicia or Steve to confirm that.
Are they, are they the square ones that shine down?
Alicia, can you weigh in on it?
Yep, I'm enjoying it. Hi, I'm Alicia Nardo. I'm the Project Manager for this project.
Hi.
They won't be a square top. They actually are more of a round shape.
Because I knew the square ones have a tendency to shine more down than out.
Yes, I'm in speaking. The circular light poles are located on the platform, but yes, we are using LED lighting that covers more of an area for the parking area, and yes, you are right, they are square.
Okay.
They're at the higher.
Okay.
They're being set up so it shines directly down. Nothing even will shine sideways.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? I'm gonna take that as a no.
Okay, well then, we'll be on our way to the zoning hearing board, and after that, we'll be resubmitting the plans. Once we have all of the other permitting in place, we'll be resubmitting the plans for signature, and as I said, moving forward, no pun intended, full steam ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night. Okay, the next item on the agenda is manager matters. The first item on the agenda is consider approving Resolution 2020-20, approving an extension of the local disaster emergency. I would need a motion to approve Resolution 2020-20, approving an extension of the local disaster emergency.
Sokolowski makes that motion.
I'll second it. Anita?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is consider approving 337 West Sixth Avenue Financial Security escrow for the release for the demolition in the amount of $12,100. Can I have a motion to approve the 337 West Sixth Avenue Financial Security escrow release?
I'll make that motion, Anita.
I'll second it, Jane. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The next item is to consider the resignation of EAC and Vacancy Board Member. So the motion is to accept the resignation of Matthew Breidenstein from the EAC and Vacancy Board. I'll need a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second, Sokolowski.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. The last item is consider approving Sora West Financial Release Number Two in the amount of $2,845. I am going to make the motion I want is a motion to deny the Sora West Financial Security Release Number Two request in the amount of $2,845. I'll make that motion.
I'm refusing myself on the vote, Bob.
Okay, so Jane, we have a, we have a. Okay, so Jane Flanagan made the motion to deny, and who seconded?
Sokolowski.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The last item on the agenda is consider approving the revised Citizen Participation Plan for CDBG and Home Programs. The Citizen Participation Plan was revised to conform to DCED's format and content by Chris Stettler, the grant coordinator. Chris Stettler, the Grant Coordinator. A copy of the Citizen Participation Plan was provided in council's meeting materials. If there are any questions or concerns on the revisions, please contact Chris Stettler prior to the August 19 voting meeting. This is a discussion only, and the vote will be taken in the August voting meeting. Does anyone have any questions on that?
No.
No.
Okay.
No. It appears the biggest change is just adding the language to allow for video meetings as part of the...
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. The next item is Council and Mayor Matters. Mayor Aronson?
So this week, I launched a series of Conchak and Strong initiatives, one of which is a virtual Conchi Strong Bingo game to help support our local businesses that will take place on August 27 at 6:00 PM. We are actually going to pull the balls live from the Conchak and VFW tent and then broadcast it to all the players on Facebook. Sarah, my wife, is purchasing gift certificates from restaurants all over the borough as prizes. You can find information about the event on my social media pages and at conchakandmayor.com/bingo. The event is being sponsored by one of our local businesses, Beacon Bridge Wealth Partners, so a big thank you to them. Thank you to the VFW for hosting the event and for Sarah for making everything happen. And then the next thing we're doing is I launched a series of yard signs, Conchak and Strong yard signs. They're being printed at Shank Printing, one of our local printing companies. All proceeds from the sale of signs are going to go to the Colony on the Bird Council, which is our local food pantry. They're $10 each, and you can find information on my social media and at conchakandmayor.com/conchistrong. And then finally, I received multiple messages, emails, and phone calls today about the extraordinary work that our police, fire, public works, and fire police put in during yesterday's storms. So I want to give a big thank you to Chief Metz, Chief Gunning, Ray Sokolowski. We're very lucky to have all of you serving our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Aronson. Mr. Stokely?
I have nothing.
Ms. Barton?
Yeah, I just want to give a huge shout out to our guys. They did an awesome job, and not only did they collect the trash today and some of the recycle, but they actually put the people's trash cans back where they came from, and they hadn't had them out on the curb. And it was just, I got a real, a lot of good feeling from my residents regarding that. So big shout out to them. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Vice President Sokolowski?
I have nothing tonight.
Ms. Flanagan?
I would just concur with Mayor Aronson and also Councilwoman Barton that our public work crew and our management team did a fabulous job. All that emergency management planning we did last summer really paid off yesterday. So thanks to everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Tino?
I do not have anything at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Metz?
I'm here, Colleen. I'd like to thank Sergeant Lennon, who came in from vacation yesterday to help out with everything that was going on here and running the OCS. I really appreciate his effort.
That's great. Thank you to Sergeant Lennon and everyone else yesterday. He did a great job. Okay. Brittany, do we have any submitted comments?
No, we did not receive any public comment via email submission.
Okay. And is there anyone from the public that wants to make a comment?
I have one other thing.
Yes.
I don't know if anyone else has had a problem or not, but we've had bikes left on our street. We think kids are going around taking the bikes and then just dropping them wherever. They need to call the police and they'll pick them up.
Okay. Thank you, Anita.
You're welcome.
Okay. With that, I will, if no one else has anything, I will say, "Meeting adjourned."
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.